So moved.
Moved by member Jay Walker.
Support.
Second by member Collins, come out of a closed session. Call roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries, the meeting is out of closed session at nine nineteen. What's the disposition of action item six, uh expulsion hearing?
Mr. President, we will deal with these separately. Um I, I move uh to expel student forty-one ninety-eight for one hundred and eighty days based on policy three, three, six, two point zero one and fifty-six ten and also the Michigan revised school code three eight zero point one three one one eight.
Moved by member Monk to expel student one, um excuse me, forty-one ninety-eight?
Yes, forty-one ninety-eight.
Oh, you said one hundred and eighty days?
Yes.
For one hundred and eighty days. There's second.
Support.
Member Walker? Dee Walker's second. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? The recommended expulsion to student number four-one ninety-eight for one hundred and eighty days. Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker? Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move to, I move to long-term suspension for student seventy-six sixty-two for the remainder of the school year, twenty-eight days, based on policy fifty-six ten and also Michigan revised school code three eight zero point one three one zero.
It's moved by member Monk to uh agree to, to approve the long-term suspension to student seventy-six sixty-two to the end of the school year.
Support.
Second, member Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion regarding the motions on the floor, the motion on the floor, excuse me. Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Excuse me, action item seven, consent agenda, under the consent agenda, seven A, approval of minutes one, A one, minutes from the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. A two, approval of minutes from the May eighth, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole workshop. B, approval of bills for payment, one. E one, April bills for payment. Excuse me, consent agenda, agenda item C, overnight track state finals request. Item seven D. Approve the MISD budget resolution. Excuse me, agenda, consent agenda item seven D E, excuse me, new hire, one. Secondary principal. Seven F, request for leave of absence. Seven G, conscious disciplined professional learning for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, not concussion. Nine, excuse me, H, approval of the HVAC articulation agreement with the Macomb Community College. And I, the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation.
Mr. President, I move to approve item seven consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Moved by member McFadden to approve consent agenda. Second by member Dee Walker. I would just like to pull off agenda item H. So it's been moved by member McFadden to approve the consent agenda, second by member Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Is there a reason you want to move H?
Yes, I want some discussion about it, yes.
Well, do you need me to make a friendly amendment?
No, no, for consent agenda, anybody can pull the item off. And then you vote for the whole package, and then you go back and deal with the one that's been pulled off.
No, you don't need to make a friendly amendment.
No, no, no. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the consent agenda? Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. The reason why I pulled uh agenda item H off, I would like for Mr. Lavender just to talk about that because this is something that's very unique uh to our district in this county. And I just wanted, you know, people to understand what it is, the articulation agreement for our HVAC program uh with the ISD. So, Mr. Superintendent, allow.
Go ahead, sir. On April twenty-ninth, uh Clemens Community Schools entered into an agreement with Macomb Community College uh to articulate students who complete HVAC here with an eighty percent or higher. If they enroll at Macomb Community College in their HVAC program, uh that, passing of that class at that grade or higher results in them getting their three correct credits of their HVAC air conditioning and refrigeration course credit. So, that's the articulation agreement.
So I, I just thought that that's something that, that should be brought up since it's unique uh to us and no one else in the county uh has, has anything like that going on. So I thought that was something that should be noted. And with that being said, I move to approve consent agenda item seven H as presented. Is there a second?
Support.
Actually, it was already, consent agenda was already approved. I just pulled it off so it don't really be approved. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Starting with you, sir.
Whoever you want to start with, but it's, it's off of Dr. McFadden's motion.
Okay, go back the same way, okay.
I mean, it's motion by Mr. Walker.
Okay, so Dr. McFadden?
Yes, again.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Takes us to item eight, business committee, A, A, A memorandum, memorandum of understanding, one to Macomb, Macomb, what's that, Macomb County Services and Henry Ford Health. That's the superintendent.
Mrs. Dawes? The district and Henry Ford has had a longstanding partnership. And during their uh state audit review last year, um it was brought to their attention that it's required to have board approval. So that's why this is being brought to the board.
And the recommendation?
The recommendation is for the board to approve the Henry Ford medical memo of understanding as presented.
Chair entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight, A memorandum of understanding with Henry Ford Health System.
Mr. President, I move to approve eight A memorandum of understanding with uh eight A one MCCS and Henry Ford Health.
Thank you, sir. Moved by member McFadden to approve the recommendation of, of memorandum of understanding with MCCS and Henry Ford Health. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, member Jay Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I have a comment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Um, I remember when Henry Ford came to the district, um and I think we're one, correctly, we're one of probably what, two, three schools that maybe have something like this in Macomb County, I believe. Um, this is just, this is, this is great for us because they service our kids. I know for athletics, the kids can go right over there and they get their uh the physicals and everything and they, you know, just the psychology department over there, they can work with our kids. You know, and I, I think it started out, it was, it was just going to be the high school, but then they opened it up to elementary, so they services the whole entire district. So this is a great partnership that's been with this district. Um, and, and I definitely welcome them and hope they hear the same.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing seeing none, call roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item nine, curriculum. Nine A, course change slash adoption, one credit economic slash personal finance. Item nine B, graduation requirements update slash change, twenty twenty-nine, personal finance, point five credits. That's the superintendent.
Mr. Lavender? The state of Michigan has defined that current eighth graders, class of twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the class of twenty twenty-nine, must earn zero point five credits for personal finance in order to meet the Michigan ma- curriculum graduation requirements. In order to meet this requirement, after working with counseling and content consultants from the Macomb Intermediate School District, District Administration are recommending a change slash adoption to the current economics course to include economics and personal finance starting in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Students completing this course would earn zero point five credit of economics and zero point five credit of personal finance. Mac Clemens Administration recommends that the Board of Education approves this course, course change slash adoption of economics and personal finance as presented.
Heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation from item nine, curriculum A and B.
Support.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve item nine, curriculum changes, A, course changes slash adoption, one credit economic slash personal finance. B, graduation requirements update change for the class of twenty twenty-nine, which includes personal finance with half a credit, second by member Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Mr. President, at the curriculum personnel committee, we did have a long discussion about how we're going to embed this into the current program. Uh, the administration recommendation I support, whole, whole heard.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing seeing none, call the roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, agenda informational items. Item ten, the business committee, ten A, financial reports. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the financial reports?
We did review um our monthly report, check register and everything seems to be in order. There was no, not too many questions regarding anything on it.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding agenda item ten A, financial reports? Agenda item ten B, contract listings. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the current contract listings? Hearing seeing none, takes us to agenda item number eleven, superintendents, comments?
All right, good evening. Um, thank you everybody for your patience. Uh, just a couple of updates, I guess I got more than a couple of hours, so I'm gonna go fast. Uh, just like to keep you, the community and everyone abreast of things that are happening that you may not see sometimes behind the scenes in the building and, or some things you may know so it might be a little uh redundant, but uh it's important that we acknowledge the positive things that are happening in our community and our district, um because we all know that the uh, the negative things uh get a lot of attention. So we have to tell our own story. So anyway, with that being said, just a few updates. I'll go by building, um, uh GSRP hosted, had thirty-one parents and twenty-nine students. They had a, a bowling field trip with the parents and the little, and the babies in GSRP were able to bowl together. Um, and they had a great night out to build that community. Um, on June twelfth, mark your calendars, you're all invited as always. It would be the uh GSRP, the baby's graduation ceremony. And it's always a, a sight to see. So if you can get there, they love seeing you all and, and uh being present and some of those things. Um, and the, the playground is complete at, for the GSRP finally, um and, and our, and those kids are loving having that separate playground to their, to, to little ones. And that's going really well and, and uh, the, the sun makes it even better. At Seminole, uh, good news, good news notes, they're, they implemented a um, a practice of conscious discipline, what we talked about before. One of the things conscious discipline talks about is the power of attention, what you focus on, you get more of. So Seminoles, uh, leadership over there, Ms. Dickinson and Ms. Frager have implemented the good news notes and they are now a daily feature at Seminole with the morning announcements. Staff submit short notes about positive student behaviors that are witnessed and the students then get a decorative button and a copy of a note to take home uh at the end of the day. And um, I was, happened to be there the other day and there's a, a kid who's already one of my favorites because uh he's always active when I'm there and it was at dismissal. And I was talking to Mr. Fringer outside and he ran up to Mr. Fringer, Mr. Frager ran off the bus. Mr. Fringer, look, and had his button showing him that he got acknowledged for making good choices. And I got my note, I'm taking it home to celebrate with his parents. Those are the things that are impactful and, and go a long way with, you know, um, supporting the positive behaviors that we want to see in our kids. The Seminoles staff put together an amazing make it and take it math and science night, uh that was well intended and for everyone. We have food, beverages, chips, desserts, um, uh, for families and staff and had a great time engaging uh with the content too. So those are our title one uh programs that are, are uh not just about, we have fun and they're great, but it's really about helping our, our parents with strategies to help their students at home with the intent. Anytime you hear these workshops, the goal is, one, have a great event, but we're trying to impact our parent involvement. And so parent involvement, uh, you know, sometimes looks, you know, our, our parents, we hear often, how can I help my kid at home? So the intention behind some of these parent involvement events is to help support them, educate them, so they can help their, their children at home, their students at home with the core subject area. So you'll always hear about uh math, science, social studies and ELA nights and when you're dealing with title funds. M step testing is nearly complete at Seminole and the staff work uh with folk to focus and try to assess every student. The school is currently close to a hundred percent participation. That's a big deal for the state. Um, if you don't get a hundred percent, you've got to answer some questions, so that's good to know. Uh, there is one final makeup day this week. M step test scores will be uh mailed to parents with our uh fourth quarter report cards. N W E A, our other locals and um standardized tests have just started and we are moving uh in the right direction with that. Our kindergarten celebration is scheduled for the afternoon on June sixth. So we got our uh DK's, uh, GSRP is June twelfth, June sixth and uh they already have more than a hundred responses and R S B Ps for that uh kindergarten promotional ceremony. And Seminoles fifth grade farewell is scheduled for the evening of May, I'm sorry, Monday, June tenth. Um, and uh that's just self-describatory what it is. Our, our students, it's a promotional ceremony for our fifth grade kids. It's transitional year. Kindergarten, fifth grade is always big and uh appreciated, you know, and preparing our students for the long, the, the big picture. Office staff over at Seminole, uh Ms. Dawn, Ms. Michelle have done amazing, amazing job for teacher appreciation and uh staff, teachers were fed, sweetened with, and appreciated from uh, from wall to wall, every single day of teacher appreciation week. So uh thanks to them for making sure we acknowledge our teachers during that week. Some announcements and celebrations at the secondary campus, the secondary parent advisory council has met a few times and is planning a gathering for parents to increase interest in the parent advisory club. They will be hosting a hustle night in the end of, uh, at the end of May. All parents are invited and uh childcare will be available. One of the, one of the goals for uh our secondary principal, when I met with uh her at the beginning of the year was to establish a parent uh group. Uh, we all talk about parent involvement and the importance and so. Um, there wasn't a formalized parent group and, and, and that was happening, they called it their PAC, um, parent advisory committee and they're functioning, they're, they're meeting, they got some teachers on there, some parents on there. Uh, and so it was a great sight to see. I was able to pop in last week at their last meeting and just appreciate those parents um for, for committing their time and, and donating their time to the, 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 the whole, the team. Um, our local, uh, one of our local sororities, our Alpha Kappa Alpha chapter, uh planted a tree in our courtyard as I told you about in one of your updates for Earth Day, uh the tree was selected to provide some coverage for our ducklings. Uh, everybody's not always happy about the ducklings, but I don't know, this goes back to your day, but these ducks are back and just yesterday they hatch and we got twelve babies, ducklings out there. Um, with the mama duck and savagely, they need some cover because it always ends up only being a few. I think a couple of visitors, predators coming through. Come through and eating good. So, I did tell, make a joke and it didn't go over too well. I said, I think our incoming principal might be a duck hunter, so it might not be a, oh, that's not funny. Yeah. Um, we had our, um, we did our, um, eighth grade, we had our eighth grade visitors come, as I shared with you previously, um, who, it was an open house type of event, not technically called an open house, but because we did have an open house last week, but this was our, our eighth grade visitors that we were recruiting uh students from outside of our district. Uh, we, they have uh close to eighty students, but I think we had, they only had in their attendance about sixty. Um, and we, uh, our secondary campus put on a show and, and recruitment of these outside uh students. Um, and, and went really well. And uh we had followed that up with myself and our, Mrs. Hines, our student staff recruiter followed up their visit to us, to visit their school um for their parent night for the eighth graders where we were able to recruit and, and market ourselves to their parents. We were one of four schools invited and uh it was just a great feeling because a number of their uh students and their parents were running up to us because of their visit. We were the only one that they visited, only school, high school that they visited. So we had a little lead and advantage and the kids like, for everything, talking about our lunch to their experiences here. Uh, so it was a great opportunity to market and then we followed that up with our, uh, open house last week. We had approximately forty families that signed up and showed up. Um, five or six of those families were students from that initiative down, um, with the, with that academy. So, looking forward to that. Um, Seminoles fifth graders will be at the secondary complex on Friday for transition day. So in addition to bringing in new, we need to keep up what we have. So we're, we're putting together these transition opportunities to uh, you know, uh, make sure our current families are aware of what we, what they have, what we have to offer and keeping them, uh, no retaining is a big part of one of the things you challenged me with and, um, and I've challenged the, the district. So, uh, we're doing other initiatives to make sure we, we're, we're addressing who we have in front of us too. Uh, prom was a wonderful event, uh thanks to Mrs. Stevens, Ms. Joseph, Ms., Mrs. Joseph, Ms. Low, um, and Ms. Hines for making it work. Uh, prom went off without a hitch from what I've been told. I think there was a little glitch. There was some adult outsiders in our parking lot near the prom that did some adult things and, or whatever outsider thing, but it was great because our local sheriffs were there and, and took them with them on the, on the prom day. So, um, that worked out. But other than that, our, our kids had a blast. Our new content creator, um, Mr. Robert was there to have a little capture our kids um in high def and, and, and the kids love, you know, how that goes seeing themselves in pictures. And so we're working on those pictures to them. Staff appreciation week was wonderful. I'll get back to that. Teen success fest was yesterday, was a giant success. Uh, thanks to Mrs. Low for putting this uh together. Ms. Low is our, um, I mixed her and Ms. Hines up already. Ms. Low is our uh college and career readiness, a new position that you all approved, um, out of our grant funds. And um she had uh business owners, entrepreneur, you name it, from throughout metro Detroit, Macomb County area who came in, broke into groups, small group sessions for all of our juniors and seniors. We had a male mentoring group going session. We had, uh, we had, they, what was some, oh, I got it, here. Here, let me tell you. We had uh fashion design happening, we had marketing happening, travel college tour. We had HVAC, uh, boys mentoring program that addressed mindfulness. I was a part of that group. Uh, floral design, Japanese and Spanish rug design. Uh, and we had a CNA and Michigan Works Young Professionals Insurance and, and Realtors um there for, and we broke stu- students up into small groups, eleven through twelfth grade. They were able to spend uh time, a couple of hours with those professionals, ask questions, engage and uh take that in. So that was huge. Um, our kids got hoodies that attended or swag, if you will. And um the kids really loved participating and being a part of it. So that was a huge success. Um, uh, green school, our secondary campus, where I mentioned this before, but now it's official. We were awarded uh, uh, our green school mini grant for middle and high school. Our student council helped uh writing that grant. Uh, so we're looking forward to the initiatives that, that grant, uh, those funds that, uh, that those funds can bring for our, our students and, and their experiences here. Um, on the windows going up slowly as you begin to see, these are our students' plans for after high school. We're gonna have a one on, on outside, you can see them. Every student, what they plan on doing after this, where they're going. So they're creating these things and they'll be posted throughout so we can celebrate and acknowledge uh their transitions into the real world. Uh, important dates to remember for secondary, senior pending, um, honors night is May twenty-first. And all these things, you're always welcome. Seniors last day is the twenty-fourth. High school is going to uh Greenfield Village on May thirty-first. Uh, middle school field day is June fourth. Middle school field trip at, to the Detroit Zoo is June sixth. Graduation again, Friday, June seventh. Don't forget, eighth grade graduation, June tenth. Exams, June eleventh and twelfth, and the last day is uh June twelfth. Couple more updates for our student and staff recruiters who are developing transition opportunities. Like I said earlier, for our fifth and eighth graders, uh so we can work on our retention. Staff appreciation week planning was May sixth through tenth. It was phenomenal. We, uh, as a district, we put on cornhole tournament uh afterward. We had probably thirties, forty staff from across the district attend. We had a great night, fun celebration food. Um, we had massage therapists, we're at uh both buildings, providing massages to staff members. Um, lunch was provided to staff at both buildings as well. So we got together and, and tried to just think of creative ways to, to say we appreciate them. There's nothing we can ever do to, to let them know enough, but um we try to make sure we, we recognize them for that week. Enrollment activities, open house, I mentioned that already, back to school bash is, is coming up. Um, YMCA on April twentieth, GSRP, we talked about that. And we're planning tours and pop-up uh enrollment events. So one of the things we, feedback we got from our, um, uh, open house was, we were talking, actually, I think Mr. Fringer thought about this and, and I did it in my, one of my former experiences. We did, parents can't always come to us. So we did pop-up enrollment spots. So we're talking about looking at how we could maybe take uh one of our, one of our, our vehicles, district vehicles, maybe get it lined or, or wrapped with school enrollment information and go do different pop-ups at different events throughout the city or the county. So, uh, we're exploring those opportunities um now. Um, community leader recognition planning, community, what's that, Dan, you mean?
Um, Terry and Karen?
Yes.
Are, you know that, or do you want me to talk?
Go ahead.
So, they're um coordinating and inviting some leaders throughout our community to partner with us and to have a, a recognition ceremony for them, to thank them for their efforts to support our kids and our school community.
Yep. Also, our marketing and planning is what you approved with our, our Moline group is underway. Uh, I think it's next Thursday, Ms. L, I'll be going to the, the iHeartRadio studio guest. Just to begin to record some commercials. But we also added this year, uh, we're gonna, one of the But we also added this year, uh, we're gonna, one of the things we're gonna do is I want students to do the commercials. So, uh, our marketing team is working on maybe using our equipment that we have here, recording some of our students to do the commercials. And so they'll be coming out in the way, as well as, uh, our content creator that we've added, uh, Robert. Is they kept going to every event to capture pictures, stills, videos that we'll begin to push out, um, strategically for our social media campaign as well. Alright, college and career coach, uh, girls mentoring program held their first meeting, uh, for thirteen eighth graders. They had pizza, um, they talked about a variety of, of, of things and topics for young ladies and, uh, that has been going so well. And the kids are, are running down and now the boys are like, where is mine, where is ours? And, uh, so it's a lot of momentum with some of these things and, uh, Mrs. Lowe is really big and, and Mrs. Hines are, um, providing these quality opportunities for our kids. So, you'll be hearing about our, our mentoring programs as they grow. Uh, building partnerships with Michigan Works to establish employment opportun- opportunities for our students, exploring summer enrichment programs, uh, nurses assistant, florists, fashion designer, Japanese. Teen Success Fest, I talked about that, uh, yesterday with all of our juniors and seniors. And last but not least, May ninth, I don't know if I, this is, uh, I'm repeating now, May ninth is open house, it was open house, I talked about that. Uh, June twelfth, last day, August twenty second, I didn't say the date earlier for Back to School Bash. Please mark your calendars, August twenty second is our Back to School Bash, I think going ten to two.
Ten to two.
Ten to two. Um, very important, strategic plan, uh, draft is undergoing review and feedback collection from the district, improvement teams, school improvement teams and our professional learning communities and community focus groups in order to, uh, come up with that final version that we'll be bringing to the board for final approval next month. Um, think tank, just to share, I, I share with you, I, I was invited to be a part of the National Think Tank, um, in Chicago. It was, I didn't know what I was getting myself into, I was one of three superintendents in the room. Everyone else in the room was, I mean, was, was of the arts, in arts and education from all over. I mean, from dance to, and it's, and we're cohorting, I believe, about thirty-five educators from across the country. And, um, it was probably one of the most powerful experiences I've had, uh, because it was about addressing diversity, equity and inclusion through implementing, through implementing the arts in public education. And so it was a very u- unique, um, perspective and, and, and idea. And so this conversation is now like growing throughout the country. Um, and we know how important the arts are to our students and our opportunities, uh, to, for the arts. And so, uh, I'm now adopted into that, that cohort and, uh, which is awesome and, uh, I'll be representing us and being a part of that. I was able to share a lot of our success, early success and experiences with, with, uh, with that group and, and they were really impressed and, and there'll be some later opportunities for us too. Uh, our new secondary, big, big news, uh, we've, we have finalized our, um, our, our candidate has, has signed on the dotted line. Our, our new secondary, um, principal, who, who will begin July first. Uh, I wanna shout a big thank you to all of the, um, interview committee members for all, from all the rounds that we had, uh, both second, first and second round. We had community people come in from, um, uh, former educators, Mike Chatel, Optimus Group, Dr. Jackson's staff, we had students involved. Uh, my second round, we had a union, uh, president, our, our district leadership. Um, I had the opportunity, the pleasure to go visit this gentleman's, um, current principalship and actually, you know, I think it was, and, and that, that was always powerful for me. So I was able to go spend a morning at his current building and, and see it in real life, right? You get one thing from interviews, but I wanna go see you walk the halls and what that looks like. And, uh, it didn't, it, it didn't disappoint. It delivered, uh, right on with what we, what we got in, in our interview process. So, I'm very excited, um, and appreciative of all the efforts that we have been having to hear from, uh, Ms. McMillian, the team. I am ecstatic about the possibilities with the, 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 uh, new principal coming in and where we can go. Um, and so I think you're gonna be very impressed. Um, we are considering, um, right now I'm in the talk with East Point, Van Dyke, and I can't remember who else was on that.
Lakeview Southland.
Yep, um, a couple of us superintendents have been discussing going to, looking at going to an agreement, um, where we can send and they can send their students back and forth to be, they don't have HVAC. So they wanna send their kids to come to us for HVAC. We want, they may have something we don't have, so exposing our students in the county, um, and start that process. So there was about four or five of us that are okay with it, um, and we're just in the beginning stages of conversation with that. So I look forward to, and I want you all to know, and I want the community to know that any opportunity that's, that's for our kids, exposing our kids and giving them, uh, an opportunity to experience things that, uh, they may not, uh, have the opportunity to experience, I'm, I'm, I'm entertained. And, um, as long as it makes sense for us, then, uh, we're gonna do it. So we're, I'll, I'm bored to come on that and I'll keep you impressed, but, uh, so thank you to all, everybody who is, again, been supportive, been involved and, um, and is a part of this journey that we're on, so that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Next on the agenda, you, or comments. Ms. Walker.
Come on first. I have no comments tonight, actually.
Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, go quick. Um, first of all, I wanna say congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-four top five. Guys did an outstanding job and I'm looking forward to, uh, graduation. Uh, I wanna say congratulations to our, uh, Teachers of the Year at all three of our buildings, Seminole, Middle School and High School. Again, um, just to reiterate with the superintendent, um, we have great teachers in our district and, uh, in the shelves. Um, I wanna say congratulations to, you know, all the recipients of years of service. I just wanna thank all the teachers, uh, actually, but especially, you know, I looked through my, uh, that list and, uh, twelve out of the sixteen teachers on that list, I've had contact with inside these walls, um, doing sometime or another. So, uh, we got great teachers. Um, I wanna say congratulations to, uh, Terry Gearing, uh, welcome to the club. That is the, um, retirement club, you're gonna enjoy it. Um, I know when, when I retired from Chrysler, I did not wanna go back and I did not go back, so welcome to the club. Um, I wanna say congratulations to superintendent and your team and all of our partners, community partners for, um, doing the diligence, going through and talking and interviewing for our new secondary principal. I look forward to meeting and I also noticed that he's a fellow alumni from Eastern Michigan University. So I definitely look forward to, uh, meeting him and wish him luck. Um, I wanna say, uh, you know, congratulations to Dante on this National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Um, he got, I didn't even know about this, I guess this was done, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's great, Dante. So, look forward, uh, to all the great things you're gonna do in, in this capacity. Uh, I wanna thank the superintendent and Ms. L for putting on a just absolute fabulous retreat. Just absolute fabulous retreat. And Ms. L got all the, uh, food items correct, um, and that's the most important thing. But no, um, the, uh, what was her name?
Dr. Barrage.
Dr. Barrage was, was awesome. Um, and I, I, you know, I always say, uh, you can never stop learning. I learned some stuff about myself, I learned some stuff about just how to interact with people. So I just wanna thank you and your team and, uh, you don't, and we really want the public to know that, you know, we have our teachers that go through their PD and I think this board needs to do PD as well, so that was well, well deserved and look forward to the next retreat, maybe at a golf course. Oh, yeah, throw that in there. Um, last but not least, uh, we have, uh, passwords for all the, uh, uh, members of the policy team and also, uh, the other board members that pass words to the policy to get on board docs. So we held our first meeting and I'll be, we will be bringing, um, the first reading to our next, uh, board, uh, workshop for the update policy that came out in February, so we on track, so, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Ms. Scott.
I'm gonna try to be super quick, um, congratulations to our top five, uh, graduation, next, or the next time we're here, our graduates will be out and living life already. So, I'm excited for them, so congratulations to the top five and, and the top twenty twenty-four. Um, our Teachers of the Year, um, absolutely excellent, um, it was great to see everyone who has had time here in our district recognized tonight. Um, I'd like to see that, that type of recognition more often. Um, to Ms. Gearing, congratulations on your retirement. Tough expulsion hearings tonight, not something I ever like to really be a part of, but it's, it's not an easy thing to sit through. But it is part of what we have to do. Um, Mr. Rigman brought up the HVAC articulation agreement with McComb Community College. It's just another step in the right direction for this program, um, and I think is a good sign for, um, additional programs in the future. The, the foot forward we're putting to make this, um, district stand out in different areas from other surrounding districts. So I think we're, we're really heading down the right track on this one. Um, that is my comments and.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Say, um, a big co- congratulations to our top five. Um, gra- gra- graduations around the corner, um, congrats to our Teachers of the Year, Ms. Sex, Ms. Joseph, Ms. Stevens. And congratulations to our, uh, staff members being recognized for their years of service, especially Ms. Dickerson. I remember being in first grade at, uh, Washington, she was there, very tough. Congrats to, um, Ms. Gearing on retirement, um, and also looking forward to our se- our secondary principal, starting July one. I want that hose and pregnant team, ten fold, um, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. MacFadden.
Yes, sir, thank you. Congratulations to our top five, congratulations to Class of Twenty Twenty Four, congratulations to our staff and superintendent, thank you for the retreat. Those are my comments, sir.
Thank you, Dr. MacFadden. Congratulations to the graduating class of Twenty Twenty Four, um, you guys made it. So, congratulations, uh, to the top five, um, congratulations for your outstanding academic achievement to be, uh, designated as one of the top five graduates in your class. That shows that you took it seriously and went above and beyond, um, what those other students classmates did. So, congratulations, accolades, uh, well deserved. For the mothers and fathers who came out tonight, uh, showing support, uh, for, for their students, we appreciate that. It's not often, um, that we're able to see, uh, parents that come up and support, uh, their students. Uh, so anytime we have parental involvement or guardian involvement or just those people that are, uh, behind the scenes, um, but are the first teachers of the young people that they send, uh, to our school system, so we thank you, uh, for your support. Teacher of the Year, um, like to say that this, these teachers were selected by their peers, even though it's the board honoring them at our board meeting, uh, the board didn't have anything to do with the voting on that. It's solely based on, uh, the peers, uh, of each individual, uh, teacher in, in their building. And they were recognized as Teacher of the Year, uh, at the McComb County, uh, Association. So, congratulations, uh, to those three that were selected by your peers as Teachers of the Year. Congratulations to our, uh, grad, uh, to our retiree. I'm new to that environment, but I'm starting to wear, it's starting to wear on me. I'm starting to wear on it too, you know? Um, and yes, I was around, uh, when Ms. Dickerson came on board thirty-five years ago. Um, she was, Dante mentioned that she was hard for him, on him in first grade, I can imagine, you know, she, she's, she was, um, when she came to the district, she was no nonsense. Uh, let's, let's stay focused on the task at hand and, uh, she, she drove, uh, students to, uh, to be their best. Those are the type of teachers, um, that, that we have in this district and recognize those teachers, uh, that were here tonight that had over five years, uh, of service in the district. We, we appreciate, uh, all that you provide and, and do for our, our students, uh, here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, superintendent alluded to, uh, some of the activities that were held, uh, during Teacher Appreciation Week. So, again, we, we just show little, uh, little efforts of our appreciation, uh, for the service that you provide to the students in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, congratulations to Boys and Girls Track Team, uh, with their accomplishment at the Church School League, uh, League Meet recently. Got a couple of champions and a couple of second places and a couple of third places, um, but to show, we showed well, uh, at, at that meet. Good luck, uh, to the boys and girls that will qualify, uh, for the state finals that will be held next Saturday. The regionals are this Friday, um, so you have to qualify, if you haven't made a certain distance or a time, you have to qualify at that meet on Friday in order to participate, uh, in, in the state championship finals that will be held in Ruddington, not Ruddington, Hudsonville, uh, over on the, off of Lake Michigan somewhere. Um, so it's quite a, quite an honor and a feat, um, to, uh, be, uh, to accomplish the, um, success of being one of the participants, uh, in, in the state meet. Remember Monk alluded to, um, and, and MacFadden, Dr. and Superintendent about the, uh, professional development, uh, that the board went through. Uh, teachers have professional development, uh, superintendent and administrators have professional developments. I've always been an advocate of professional development, uh, of board members. Um, but we, we spent, uh, a day and a half, uh, going through various exercises and activities. Um, it was a modification of the old Briggs Meyer, uh, characteristic training, um, and what it taught all of us around this table that were there, um, that all of us possess varying degrees of certain traits and characteristics. Uh, but some of them are more dominant, uh, than others, but we all possess those and, uh, working through that in the various ways of working together collaborat- collaboratively, um, um, even though we may have more dominant traits or less dominant traits than other board members, it, it takes a team effort, uh, of everybody working together cooperatively, uh, to come up about the best decision on behalf of the school district. So, that, uh, Mr. Monk said, he learned some things about himself. I think we all learned some things about ourselves and we all, and at different points and stages in, in your life or development, what are you going through? You might have one dominant trait that's, that's dominant then, but in a different situation, it's another dominant trait that takes over. And so we all, they were all, if you might hear us in the future allude to, or he, he's acting green or he's acting gold or orange or blue. Those were the colors that were used in, in the charac- charac- characteristic traits and, and so we're joking that, you know, we're, we're stuck on, yeah, he's over there acting green, he's over there acting blue. Uh, so that's what we're talking about, the, uh, the character traits that we've learned about ourselves and our other colleagues, um, uh, at, at our professional development. Uh, superintendent alluded to, um, having, um, open house, uh, for out of district students. Uh, I, I, I'm going to say, cause I know, don't know how far and wide this goes through, but we are not going to anybody else's district picking off their students. Uh, the opportunities that the superintendent spoke about are students that are not in somebody's local school district. Um, they are in a different, uh, type of, uh, environment, uh, that, that does not go, that, that goes K eight. Um, they have no home for nine, twelve, so we're not picking off anybody's students. We're just trying to, uh, show them a different option that they uh, show them a different options that they have, that they don't currently have, cause they don't automatically matriculate, uh, into a ninth grade environment. So, again, we're not going to anybody's district picking off their students, I don't want that to be said, that Mount Clemens is going to people's district picking off their students, cause that, we're not, the fact that is not, uh, what we're doing. Uh, just have a, a concern, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Superintendent that you can work on is, um, what are our strategies, um, for the recording, of the graduation exercise and as we move forward, uh, in, in, into the, the, uh, future, uh, what are, what are our plans? Roll out for, uh, televising and recording of our, our meetings. Those are my comments, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by member D. Walker.
Or.
Second member J. Walker, it's non debatable, call the roll, ladies.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. MacFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rigman?
Yes. Motion carried, meeting is adjourned at ten ten P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your commitment, service and your longevity tonight.